Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Twinsburg Regular Council Meeting of January 12th, 2021, to order. The time is 7:30. We are at the Twinsburg Government Center Council Chamber. Shannon, will you please call the roll?
Ms. McPherson, here. Mr. Scapidi?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
At this time, Mr. Fury will lead us in the invocation and the Fledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, from whom all power comes, by those divine will and all must abide, we thank you for our civil liberties and our freedom, for our opportunities and privileges. We beg you bless, assist, and enlighten this council and the representatives in the City of Twinsburg. May we prove worthy of the confidence placed in us by our fellow citizens. May we be just and upright in thinking, honest, and in all our actions, and ever be guided by a true and conscious in the legislation we propose to vote upon. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. This time, I would like to know if everyone's had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
From our last meeting?
I make the motion that the minutes are accepted as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay. Shannon, would you please call the roll? Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scapidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay, the approval of the minutes passes seven to zero. Do we have any wards and presentations this evening?
There are none.
Do we have any audience participation this evening?
Yes, we have one person signed up, and it is Bob Hughes. Mark will be letting him on.
Is anybody okay?
We can't hear you, Bob.
Hear me out?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, this is Bob Hughes, 229 Emmy Drive, in Twinsburg. And I've heard that the ordinance on signage has been changed as of the last council meeting of the year, 2020. And while this is great news, since I've only been nagging about it for about five years, I think it is important to note a few profoundly serious complaints. And council bragged a little bit about it, about this, since it ended up being a 27-page document, not just a paragraph. And I had mentioned I was concerned about the paragraph on political signage that was needed fixed. Wasn't concerned about the other, but I do understand you don't change the whole thing. It was in violation of the changes in the state political signage law that is the reason for the changes needed, that was told me five years ago. I will address my profound concern in the second part of this talk. But let's put some timing on this talk just in perspective. I once worked on a team that put together a comprehensive plan for a township that included public hearings, park, and at the finish. We accomplished this with many more than 27 pages of documents in two and a half years. Secondly, the state rules have been around for quite some time, at least over five years. Anybody in local government with any common sense would have borrowed a copy of a local city that already had ordinance in place, which logically would be done by the law director to ensure that the document is legal. That document would easily be edited to fit Twinsburg's needs. We might have had maybe a paragraph worth of editing to do. If we started from scratch on this document, there had better be a darn good reason, or somebody ought to be fired because this state's ruling existed for years. So it's still no excuse for the five years that it took. But now the timing is a minor issue because this 27-page document replaced the 20-page document, or approximately the 20-page document. That's a 35% change. I'm assuming that the changes made were at Twinsburg time of the state. This is an ordinance, something we hold people accountable and have certainly policed, albeit arbitrarily, on the political sign portion. I'll put in ordinance, go from 20 to 27 pages without recognizing that the first ordinance was wrong and in violation of the law. And if this one ordinance isn't incorrect, what about all the others out there that have not been changed for years? Are they all wrong? We already know that the R7 Senior Residential is wrong because we granted 18 variances the last time it was applied, and our history of getting sued and losing is a proven fact. Maintenance of ordinance is a key function of the city who is policing this, while the responsibility falls on the Director of Planning and Development, Larry Finch. He is the keeper of the up-to-date ordinances. However, they are not up-to-date. They are woefully out-of-date. I'm sure Mr. Finch would respectfully indicate that he's been busy with the replacement of jobs due to Chrysler Plant and the mini Pinecrest program for the center city. But here lies another problem. The Chrysler Plant property was marketed by the firm who bought it. All the city did was negotiate long-term act abatements, hardly a difficult task. In the center city project, it appears that nothing other than the construction of the old core has been accomplished thereafter, yours. Hardly anything to brag about.
One minute.
By the way, the Pinecrest model appears to be failing since Pinecrest has now been taken over by the banks. So it looks like we have some problems. We have one up-to-date ordinance and a lot of questions on the others. I want to consider redirecting efforts to one of the primary functions of the city, wood ordinances. That means directing the workforce in the appropriate manner hasn't been done. Thank you very much.
You have something to say?
No, I haven't.
No. Does anyone have any comments? Your thoughts? What? Oh, does anybody else? There's no one else signed up this evening. Okay, moving on to council communications and committee reports. Mrs. Stoffer?
The ERB met on December 17th. There were eight cases on case 3103, Marino Rain, Petio Enclosure that was, that motion was approved. Case 0102, 9224, Daryl Road, Domino Sign Review that was approved as noted with a small variant. 03, 9076 Church Street Sign Review that was also approved as submitted. And then Pulte Homes, we had a number of homes that were approved as well. There was a home at 2797 Hunter's Ridge that was approved as noted. 2957 Hunter's Ridge, approved as noted. 3042 Wyatt's Way, single-family home that was approved. 3036 Wyatt's Way were also approved. And they all had small notes to them, but they were approved as noted. There was one CBS sign, the last one, that's up for review. They're going to bring some more information back about the lighting and that. I also attended the capital improvements meeting last week, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Earlier this month, I attended the CIC meeting where the Board elected new officers, and we discussed the continued improvement and progress of working with the developer for the downtown redevelopment. My next meetings are the Comprehensive Plan, which would be on January 25th. I have an Environmental Commission on February 2nd at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Good evening. Thank you. None of my committees have met since our last time here in council, but we have a couple of meetings coming up. The Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on Monday, January 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet before our next regularly scheduled council meeting. That would be at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And I'm assuming we'll determine whether or not it's a hybrid meeting or an in-person meeting as we get a little closer to that date. That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Scapidi?
Thank you. Good evening. As far as committee reports, I have no committee, the committees have not met, as was mentioned, and Mr. Barr mentioned, that Finance will be held on the 26th at 6 o'clock. Under Communications, I do have a couple of things. I got a call from a resident that asked me what possibility would be to have a canala placed in front of the city hall when we do the Christmas decorations and the menorah for the, for the various holidays. And the canala represents the Kwanzaa. It's basically similar to the menorah. It's a candle-type thing. And I just thought that, you know, when she mentioned that, I thought it'd be a good idea, and I was hoping that, I know Mayor, we're going to be looking at decorations this year, if that's still on schedule. I know it's early yet, but this is probably the time to start looking because it's when you really get some good deals. But aside from that, so I thought, I just wanted to drop that to you and let you know that I think it's a good idea, and I'm sure, I would assume we would all agree. Let's put it that way. So hopefully, we could add something like that to our display next year, or at the end of this year.
Sure.
Okay. The other thing is, talking about signs earlier, we all know Resident David Post, and through all the car thefts and so on and so forth, his car was stolen. And he brags about the cooperation and the job that was done through our police department in locating his car and bringing it back and bringing that to a close. He was very appreciative of that. Well, during that time, when he came to the police department, he happened to notice above the police station door, there was a sign there that's been there forever and ever, and was really, really looking kind of haggard. So David took it upon himself to go ahead and, in appreciation, have a new sign made at his cost and have it installed. And I know they put it up, I believe within the last week, maybe two weeks, they put it up there. And if anybody's seen it, it looks very nice. And I just, I wanted to pass along a thank you to David Post for doing that. He certainly didn't have to do that, but he wanted to show his appreciation to the police department. So again, thank you to David Post for stepping up and taking care of that for the city. That was, that was very generous. Other than that, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
Thank you. My committees have not met yet, so the next meeting will be late February. Thank you.
Mr. Bellin?
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. I attended this evening's ceremonial swearing-in of Lieutenant Perlatti and full-time firefighter Wall. I'd like to offer my congratulations to both of them and thank them in advance for their service to the City of Twinsburg. I'd also like to thank Chris Campbell. I reached out to him at the beginning of December. I had a resident contact me about a no outlet sign in Corbett's Farm. And within a matter of about three weeks, over the holidays, Mr. Campbell and his department took care of that for that resident. So I just, I really do appreciate how quickly he got that taken care of for that resident. None of my committees have met. The Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to meet on January 27th, 6:30 PM here in council chambers. And the Public Works Committee is scheduled to meet not until April 13th, 6:00 PM, also here in council chambers. Nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no committee meetings to report on. The GAF advisory meeting will be on the 19th at 6:30, and Finance will be on January 26th. And I did want to acknowledge our audience participation, but I also want to encourage anyone who has any concerns about the city that all the department heads are only a phone call away, and many of the questions and concerns can certainly be addressed directly with the department heads or somebody else in City Hall. Moving on to the mayor's report. Do you have anything to report this evening?
I do. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back. Unfortunately, we are in this still hybrid kind of mode. It's good to see all your faces, however, looking forward to when we have our full council meetings back in action. Couple of things going on in the city. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday break. Looking forward to 2021. It's going to have its challenges, but I'm excited about hopefully where we go. On Route 91, we've got some Cobra lights being installed, so that section of roadway between the roundabouts is really dark. If you've driven there at night, driven there at night in the rain is even worse. I think the restriping of the center lines that are now reflective and a little bit raised help, but we are installing some lights in that area. So just, that should occur within the next week or so. So that's going on. I do want to congratulate Dan Wall, who's our new full-time firefighter, paramedic, and Mike Perlatti. He's been with the department for a long time, and it's great to see his leadership recognized and moved up to lieutenant rank. So that was swearing-ins we did this evening. Our branch and leave program, so our branches are done. Our guys are still out doing leaves. I saw leave crews going out today. So they're going to work probably through the end of this week, just to give the residents a heads up. It could get cut short next week just because of, we're expecting some snow to come. So be patient out there. They're out there doing, doing the best they can to finish things up. And then lastly, I just want to thank all the residents, the organizations, the members of the organizations, and all that participated in our survey and our focus groups. We now have the survey results published on the website, and you can reach them if you just go to mytwinsburg.com/survey. That'll take you directly to them. I think, you know, we have some legislation in front of council tonight regarding 2.4 millage tax ballot issue that's going to be for May, and I think I plan on speaking during, when that legislation's presented. But I do thank all the residents because the information we got, I think, has really helped guide us and come into that decision, and will probably help guide us in the next couple of years as we try to make some challenging decisions. And so, you know, I think the residents as a whole were very candid with both their concerns with the city and different things that are happening, as well as the services and amenities and what they like about the city and what they want to see continue here at the city. So there was a lot to consider and absorb, but I'm just thankful that, you know, council and everyone supported that initiative and the residents participated. So with that, that's all I have this evening. And we really have, with this format, no department head reports. I know all of council has received a couple of department head reports. I've asked them in my meeting yesterday to make sure they prepare that and get it out to council. One thing we are doing for the residents, so over, I don't know how many year period, there's typically a mayor's report that is provided to me. I believe council gets a copy of it, too. It's a kind of an internal document. However, we've kind of revamped it, and we're going to start getting that in a format that can be sent out via social media or through email or website. And then we'll kind of do kind of a spotlight of every department just to give the residents a little sense of, you know, what's happening in each of the departments, as well as there's a lot of statistical data that I look at and the council looks at as it relates to department operations. So we are working on that. We've about got it finalized, so I believe, starting maybe with the December report, we'll get that out to everyone, and it'll be available for the residents also. So with that, that's all I have.
Moving on to legislation and ordinance 103, 2020.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at 1816 East Aurora Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, from C to commercial use to R5 residential use.
Okay, this stands on the first reading. Ordinance 103, 2020 now stands on the second reading, and there will be a public hearing, which is scheduled for January 26th at 6:30. It'll be read for the third and final time at our regular meeting. Ordinance 104, 2020.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at Ravenna Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, from I to industrial use to R5 cluster residential use.
Okay, ordinance 104, 2020 will also be read for the third and final time at our next regular meeting after the public hearing. Ordinance 10, ordinance 01, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum with the Twinsburg Township to provide fire protection and emergency medical services and declare an emergency.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 01, 2021 on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. This agreement is with the Twinsburg Township to provide fire and EMS services until December 31st, 2023, and the emergency is because we need it to start. Is there any further discussion on the emergency? Hearing done. Shannon, will you please call the roll?
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scapidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 01, 2021 passes seven to zero. Resolution 02, 2021.
That was the emergency?
Yeah.
Going to pass it?
Oh. Wait, what is it?
You want to adopt as an emergency.
So I want to make a motion to adopt it as an emergency. Resolution 01, 2021.
I'll second.
I have a second. Thank you, Mr. Fury. Shannon, will you call the roll?
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Scapidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
So, motion, emergency resolution passes seven to zero. Okay, now we're on to Resolution 2021.
02.
02. I'm reading that wrong. Okay, Resolution, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Shannon.
Resolution 02, 2021. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners Incorporated.
And a motion to adopt Resolution 02, 2021. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Walker, second. Thank you. This is just an annual memorandum of understanding between Tinkers Creek as our partners. Is there any other discussion? Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scapidi?
Yes.
Resolution 02, 2021 passes seven to zero. Resolution 03, 2021.
A resolution declaring the necessity to levy a 2.4-mill tax to support the City of Twinsburg Police and Fire Department's capital expenses and police and fire pension funds in excess of the 10 mils limitation.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 02, 20, 03, 2021. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Who's second?
Mr. Bellin.
Oh, Mr. Bellin. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about, so both Resolution 03, 2021, and Ordinance 04 is two separate pieces of legislation that will put on the ballot in May, a 2.4-mill police and fire levy. This is the same, 2.4 mils that we were looking to put into place back last year. There's going to be dedicated millage for both police pension and fire pension, as well as a mill for capital, so .7 and .7. These are separate accounts. We're going to set up an actual separate fire, a fire and police account from a capital standpoint. But I think the decision and my discussions with council and the recommendations to go for the 2.4-mill and present that to the residents kind of was a byproduct of the survey results and the focus groups. I think when you look at the survey itself, I know there was this, a lot of discussion about one levy and a second income tax levy, and then the question was, would you support both? And when we looked at the survey results for them individually, we had about a 60% support for them individually. However, when they were put together, it went down to 40%. And I think, you know, looking at that and understanding that, I think the decision to go for just one tax levy, and I don't think it takes away our future discussions on our needs here at the city from a revenue standpoint, but I think, you know, my focus on 2021 is to hopefully get our community back to some type of normal life that they were used to. You know, I stay very much in tune with the vaccines and how they're being rolled out. We're having discussions about how we plan events as we come into spring, hoping that we can start doing some of the things that we love to do here in town. And I think looking at, you know, protecting our police and fire pension and our capital is something that will help us moving forward into, you know, from, in 2022 is when they would start. Looking at, the need still does not go away. I think from a lot of discussions we had last year, we were fortunate from CARES Act money, as well as some dividends paid from workers' comp that helped us, along with a lot of the budget cuts for 2020, that our year-end balances are healthy. And so I think that helps make that decision easier going forward into 2021. But I do want to thank again the residents and everyone that participated because I think the feedback was extremely helpful as we look at, you know, we have a lot of amenities and a lot of services we offer here in the city, and it really helped kind of prioritize that for myself and I'm sure for council also in terms of the decisions that we make going forward. Still going to be some challenging decisions, but now we've got some input from the residents on some of the directions that we may take. So I would ask council to support both of these as we move forward with these two pieces of legislation. And I know that the resolution will be voted on tonight, and the other will have its three readings. So, but anyway, I just wanted to share those comments and again, thank the residents for all the data that they provided us.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just, I'd just like to echo the mayor's thanks to the residents for taking the time and really putting some thought into their survey responses and those focus groups. That is very helpful to us as a body. You know, we had several discussions, both in council chambers, and I won't speak for everybody else, but I'm sure you guys all had several numerous conversations around finances with residents and this, that, and the other thing, and over the past year. And even the folks that were vehemently against raising taxes and those kind of things, almost to a person, every single one of them said, I'm going to support police and fire, support police and fire, support police and fire. And so I'm very optimistic and I'm excited. I will be voting for both of these, and I will be supporting both of these because I will absolutely do everything that I can do to support our police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Wall. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scapidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Resolution 03, 2021 passes seven, zero. Ordinance 04, 2021.
An ordinance submitting a proposed tax levy to the Summit County Board of Elections requesting that they place a 2.4-mill tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation, providing support of the City of Twinsburg Police and Fire Department's capital fund and the Police and Fire Department Pension Funds on the City of Twinsburg ballot at the primary election on May 4th, 2021.
Thank you. So ordinance 104, 2021 stands on its first reading. I will be making a motion- I will be making a motion during miscellaneous to add a special council meeting to ensure we get three readings and prior to the board of elections deadline. Moving on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Mr. Bellin?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
I just have something I would say cute. Today is National Hot Tea Day. Today is improve your blood pressure, your energy levels, your memory concentration. It's a day of to work harder. And I thought of Joanne and it says a day for shop for travel day and a day to stick to your New Year's Eve resolutions. So we have a lot to do on today if you have not done it. So just want to let you know that, you know, just celebrate today however you can. And if, and if you don't, just remember some of the things that I said. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing further tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Barr?
Nothing additional this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Fury?
I forgot earlier to wish Mr. Thues a happy belated birthday. Happy birthday, Bob. That's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Stoffer?
I have a couple of things. I did forget to mention that the next ARB meeting will be on January 21st at 6 o'clock. Maybe Zoom. I'm not sure if it'll be Zoom or in person. And I also wanted to comment on resolution 03 and 04, and I, and I wanted to thank the residents for their feedback and, and also to council and the mayor and everyone who supported this because I will be supporting it as well, I think, listening to the residents. And this is what they, you know, it's something that we truly need to do. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mary Yates?
Nothing else from me this evening.
Mr. Maestros?
Nothing. Thank you.
Shannon?
Nothing. Thank you.
I have a few motions for council to consider this evening. There's a motion that council will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, January 19th at 6:00 PM for a second reading on ordinance 04, 2021. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, second. Is there any discussion?
Will that be, that will be a Zoom meeting?
That'll be a Zoom meeting.
Mr. Bellin was actually the second, but thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I would have seconded it, but he got there first.
Is there any other discussion?
No, thank you.
Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. I have another motion that city council does not oppose the transfer of a liquor license from RCJ Petroleum, 6 LLC, doing business as Rita, 6 BP, to Max Convenience Stores, LLC, doing business as Circle K located on East Aurora Road, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, second. This is just a transfer of the C1, C2, and D6 permit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. Shannon, will you please call the roll?
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to zero. Motion that the city council does not oppose the new liquor permit for Max Convenience Stores, LLC, doing business at Circle K located on East Aurora Road, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scafidi, second. This is to transfer the C1 and C2 permit. Is there any further discussion?
So that's multiple licenses at the same location, is that what it is?
So there's a transfer and then they had already applied, so we'll just submit our motions to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control and they'll sort it out.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So they're not going to get two permits.
Thank you.
Correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a second?
Mr. Scafidi had second.
Oh, Mrs. Scafidi, sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
We've got a lot of liquor conversations going on. We have another motion, and that's that the city council does not oppose the transfer of liquor permit from city of Twinsburg, doing business as Glen Eagles Golf Course to JJV Restaurant Enterprises, LLC, doing business at Glen Eagles Golf Course located on Glenwood Drive, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is to transfer the D6 and D5 permit. Is there any other further discussion?
I just have a question for Mr. Maestros. This is the language that is in the lease agreement, whereas the liquor permit would revert back to the city, should they move or terminate their lease?
That's correct. This is the transfer of our liquor license and under the lease, you're exactly right, Mr. Barr, if, if and when, or if the, the lease expires, it reverts back to the city. We have both the management agreement and the lease agreement that provides for that. So this is how long it took to work through the state liquor control board to get it transferred from the city to JJB. So we had that management agreement and then it'll revert back at some point in time in the future.
Understood. Thank you to the clerk.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
This motion passes seven to zero. Now I have a motion to approve the 2020 bid list for projects listed. Has everyone had a chance to look, oh, to look through that?
Yes, I have.
Yes. I need, would you like a second?
I make a motion that we approve the bid list, the 2020 bid list, 2021 bid list.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Hearing done. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. There's another motion to move the December 28th, 2020 meeting to December 7th. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moving this meeting will allow us to have two meetings in December as required by the charter, and this has been a standard practice for many years. If passed, the two dates will be December 7th and 14th. Is there any discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Another motion to review is abolishing the compensation committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, second. The compensation committee was formed by a motion therefore to remove it, and motion must be made. This committee has not met and is no longer used.